...meeting for May 20, 2014. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Here.
Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here.
This evening, we have, for tonight's invocation, we have Pastor Michael Feeling from the Village Church of Bartlett.
Father, thank you for the privilege to come before you and pray in a setting like this, to humble ourselves before you, and we thank you all for your amazing provision for each of us personally and also for this city. It is a genuine privilege that we have to serve the people of Bartlett. And I want to thank you for the men and women who served this city so faithfully. The decisions that we make affect so many lives on such personal levels, and Father, we want to make decisions for the best of our people. So this evening, I want to ask for your help in two specific ways. First, your word says that if we ask for wisdom, that you give it generously. So Father, would you grant the men and women leading our city in our time tonight true wisdom from your Holy Spirit? And second, your word says that we should seek your will above all else. So as our leaders discuss and decide, may you superintend this meeting so that your will, not our own, may be done. And the fact that we even need to pray is evidence of our need for help. And so we ask that you would help us continue to serve as we model just a glimpse of your heart for service. And thank you again, and we pray this in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Feeling, and we will remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Packed house tonight. Next item on the agenda is considered our Consent Agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered at the appropriate time on the agenda. At this point, is there any items that any board member would like to remove or add to the Consent Agenda?
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to add items E2 and E3 to the Consent Agenda, please, under Police and Health Committee.
Anything else? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to amend the Consent Agenda to include items E2 and E3 on the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Just moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Aaron's. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now entertain a motion to approve the amended Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Shipman, seconded by trustee Cammerer. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cammerer, seconded by trustee Martin. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Upstee.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the Bills List. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Bills List as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Aaron, seconded by trustee Carbonero.
Mr. President, I move to remove item, items number two and three on page six under the Professional Development Fund. As, I can't vote on those matters as I have a conflict of interest.
Items number two and three on page six.
Right, it's the College of DuPage. I'm an employee of the college, and I can't vote on that.
So there's a motion to amend, first motion, that requires the second, and then a roll call on a motion to amend.
Motion made to amend the Bills List to remove items payable to
COD.
COD by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Martin. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now introduce a, introduce a, accept the motion to approve the amended Bills List.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Shipman, seconded by trustee Cammerer. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the payment for the bills on page six for COD.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. President, I'd like the record to reflect that I'm going to recuse myself at this time.
Okay.
Can you just stand up and turn around and so put your hands over your ears?
Let the record reflect that trustee Ranky has recused himself from the vote. There's a motion to approve the payment for COD by trustee Aaron, seconded by trustee Carbonero. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Grab trustee Ranky.
Late again.
All right, next item on the agenda is the Treasurers Report. Mr. Martinoix.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of brief items this evening. Start out with the sales tax report for fiscal year through March 2014. Fiscal year-to-date revenue is $1,915,775, and it represents a 0.80% increase over the same time period last year. And currently, sales tax is trending right on or over the budgeted amount. Moving on to the motor fuel tax report for fiscal year end through April 30, 2014, a full fiscal year. Fiscal year-to-date revenue, $1,234,808, and it represents a 3.71% increase over the prior year's budget.
Thank you, Mr. Martinoix. Do we have any questions for the Treasurers Report? Next item on the agenda is the President's Report, which we have many things to go through here. First, we have, I ask that Chief Williams, please step up. We have a special retirement announcement, and the chief is going to share some details with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honored trustees of the board. Thank you for having the opportunity and the privilege to speak to you this evening, and it is with tremendous honor and pride, and with more than a small sense of sadness that I want to call Officer Michael Kamisak and Brewster up front and center. I'm here this evening tonight to announce Brewster, a Czechoslovakian-born shepherd's, more than well-deserved retirement. Brewster has been with us now for nine and a half years, and to say that he's been a tremendous asset to not only the police department but the entire village of Bartlett and the community as a whole would be a tremendous understatement. What a, what a great team they have been for the last nine and a half years, and I would, on a daily basis, Brewster has provided security and protection for our officers during unpredictable scenarios and traffic stops, not to mention tremendous protection and partnership for Officer Kamisak. And to avoid running a risk of missing, a few of the highlights, and there are daily highlights, I'd like to read a few of them. Brewster has brought many smiles and enjoyment to countless children throughout the village of Bartlett as he makes sure that he attends, if not all, most of our neighborhood watch programs and our neighborhood community parties. Brewster has performed countless building searches during alarm calls which, for businesses, schools, and personal dwellings, for unsecure and structures where we were unaware whether or not there was a potential burglar or criminal inside the dwelling. And I have to tell you that Brewster does in short order, within a matter of minutes, what would it take literally mutual aid officers from surrounding communities, hours to do in clearing buildings. So that's been a tremendous asset to the police department. Brewster's presence has provided a command presence and sense of calm during many incidents such as disturbances or fights, which have potential to otherwise become highly unpredictable and volatile for all parties involved. Brewster has passionately served on the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System, Mobile Field Force Services, where he has ensured peace throughout the Chicago metropolitan area amongst agitated and angry crowds. Brewster, on numerous occasions, has reunited family members during the trying times of looking for either a missing child or elderly loved one. Brewster was responsible for the location and recovery of four firearms, two knives, and countless proceeds from robberies and burglaries, where he's able to track from the crime scene to the tools of the crime, and then from those items on to the offenders. Brewster's keen sense of smell is responsible for location and recovery of over 15 kilos of illegal narcotics and more than 5,000 United States currency utilized in the sales of illegal drugs. Brewster was responsible for locating and apprehending the following criminal suspects, not only in Bartlett but throughout the surrounding jurisdictions. One suspect for attempted murder, two suspects for illegal shots fired into the community, five separate armed robbery suspects, the apprehension of three separate arson offenders, 12 different burglary suspects were brought to justice because of Brewster's keen sense of smell. One offender was brought into custody for aggravated battery to a fellow police officer. One felony warrant was served on a person fleeing during obstructing justice. Three different suspects were apprehended after felony warrants. Three incidents involving suspects wanted for domestic battery. One offender wanted for aggravated assault to a police officer in a neighboring jurisdiction. One suspect wanted for obstructing a peace officer. Three separate suspects wanted for fleeing and attempting to lewd during police pursuits. Five offenders who fled after hit-and-run accidents. Two offenders for criminal damage to property. Four suspects wanted for their part in criminal trespass to residents. And over a dozen persons we had to search for because of their missing and potentially suicidal status. And those are just the highlights, those don't include the daily. And before it's all about Brewster, this is a team. This is a team, it's a well, it's a phenomenally professional and passionate team. And just a few highlights that Officer Kamisak brings to this team. During his partnership with Brewster, he received two Meritorious Shift Citations Awards in 2011 and 2013, a meritorious service award in 2011, Police Officer of the Year in 2011, the I.D.O.Y. enforcement awards in 2009 and 2014, the Cook County Sheriff's Department's Meritorious Service Award in 2012. And that being said, Mike is also a well-recognized and acknowledged K-9 trainer throughout the metropolitan Chicago area, where he teaches fellow K-9 officers the intricacies of K-9 law and for their handlers. And additionally, he also teaches at the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy for rookie officers so that they understand how to properly work alongside a K-9 unit. So with that being said, Mayor, I invite you.
That's a lot. Yeah, can I? Can I?
I think you're good. As a side note, we, and on a happy note, Brewster will retire to his kibble and bits and enjoy his very loving family. And Officer Kamisak has also been awarded the next K-9 unit, and Luther, named after the founding father of Bartlett, has been purchased and is being trained as we speak. And so Mike has got divided efforts between Brewster for the next couple of days, and he's also training Luther, so he's a very busy man. So we're very excited about the prospects of bringing Luther on as our next K-9. So with that.
Trustee Shipman will be announcing the passover, I guess, from the police department to the new owners, correct?
That's correct.
All right.
You don't mind if I read the proclamation as well?
Yeah.
And I've never seen Bob lean over so far in a chair. Whereas, in the opinion of at least three-fourths of the corporate authorities of the village of Bartlett, it is no longer necessary or useful, or for the best interest of the village of Bartlett, to retain ownership of the personal property herein after described. And whereas, this K-9 property was acquired in 2004 and underwent 3,000 hours of training in obedience, building searches, area searches, article searches, tracking, narcotics detection, obstacle course training, and handler protection during his 10 years of service with Officer Michael Kamisak as the Bartlett Police Department K-9 team. And whereas, the K-9 team has responded to as many as 1,100 calls for service in Bartlett and neighboring communities, including work with the FBI, United States Customs Service, and the DEA. And whereas, for the past 10 years, the village of Bartlett has relied on this K-9 property's faithful performance, and he has routinely met and exceeded our high expectations, loyally serving the village for little more than some water, some kibble, and a pat on his head. And whereas, the service life of this hard-working and invaluable asset has come to an end, and it has been determined by the President and Board of Trustees of the village of Bartlett to sell said personal property to Officer Michael Kamisak for the price of $1. Now therefore, the village of Bartlett offers Brewster its thanks and fond wishes for many comfortable years of retirement and, further be it ordained by the President and Board of Trustees of the village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and Kane Counties, Illinois, as follows. The chief of police is hereby authorized to sell the village of Bartlett Police Department K-9 Brewster to Officer Michael Kamisak for the price of $1. And actually, I do have a motion to make. I would like to move to approve ordinance number 2014.
Forty-one?
Forty-one, an ordinance authorizing the sale of the personal property owned by the village of Bartlett.
Second.
Moved by trustee Shipman, seconded by trustee Martin. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Oh, yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Absolutely.
I forgot, you know, it was a while back. I think you, let me get a dollar or something.
With that, I think Officer Kamisak has a word he'd like to say, and then he'd like to present his dollar to the board.
First off, I want to thank the village board for their continued support of the K-9 unit. It is much appreciated, and as you see, the efforts really pay off. Especially want to thank the village administrator, Mrs. Salmons, for her outstanding support for the K-9 unit, and to our chief of police, Cat Williams, for his support. And I thank you for the opportunity not only to work my buddy and partner Brewster, but to work our new guy, who is, I'm sure, going to do just as well, Luther. So with that.
And just a real quick short note, I'd like to also, on behalf of the police department, thank the family. This is a team effort, this is a team effort. So thank you very much to the entire Kamisak, so I can have you stand up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, chief. For all of us dog lovers, that was a treat.
I trust Luther will make a similar appearance at some point here, chief.
Chief, I had a question about the next dog, same type of dog, same German shepherd, or?
Yes, Luther is in training. He's coming along fantastically. Officer Kamisak is a veteran K-9 officer, as you know, and he's very excited about his progress today. He will be another German shepherd. Very large, very large, and quite handsome, and we will tell him that often.
Chief, how old is he?
I'm sorry?
How old is Luther?
Luther, Luther would be a little over a year now, and he's, and that's when they start their intensive training. So yeah, he's ahead of the curve, I'm proud to say, and a great fit, a great fit. Mike was just telling me yesterday that he brought him up to training today, and he hit the slider on the K-9 unit, and Luther immediately put his head through the window and put his chin on his shoulder and kind of went half to sleep on the way. He said this is going to be a good fit, so, yeah, yeah, they're good friends already, so we're very excited about that.
Thank you, chief. All right, next item on the President's Report is retiring teachers and administrators' recognition. What I would like to do for those teachers and administrators in attendance is when you hear your name, step up, and then I'll finish the resolution, and then we'll need to vote on the resolution, and at that point, we will present you with an award. So whereas Terry Dom, Mary Ann Davis, Leslie Erickson, Linda Gartner, April Johns, Robert King, Lori Clopping, Margaret Lubing, Donna Mansell, Cecilia Morgan, Coral Murray, Betty Myers, George Phalen, John Pritchard, and Mary Beth Wallace, no relation, have all contributed to the education of students within the village of Bartlett. And whereas, these men and women are retiring from their careers as educators and administrators, and whereas each has expanded the minds and broadened their spirit of many, many young Bartlett residents in their classrooms, and whereas each of these retirees have contributed their unique talents to their school and this community throughout, through long hours and dedicated work. And whereas the devotion to public service and the betterment of their students, the U-46 School District and our community, that these individuals displayed over their careers are accomplishments that are deserving of our thanks and recognition. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Kevin Wallace, village president of the village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and Kane Counties, Illinois, offer the congratulations and appreciation of the village of Bartlett to these local educators and administrators upon their retirement. And I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Seconded by trustee Aaron's, seconded by trustee Martin. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you for being here tonight.
If I may say, the fact that we have a wonderful community is built on the wonderful children that you've set for us to teach, and all of us thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, under the President's Report, is the presentation of the Historical Society Building Plaque Program. Historic buildings reflect the values of the times in which they were built, offer irreplaceable insights into the past, and stand as a foundation upon which current society has developed. In that spirit, the Bartlett Historical Society will be presenting handcrafted plaques to the owners of six historical buildings. Now I will introduce the nominees, while a photo of each house will be projected on the wall. President Gary Pleist will hand out the plaques assisted by Joan Pleist. Historical Society members Karen Anconkle and Eileen Lucero will briefly describe each one. First house is a framed bungalow, built around 1918 at 216 North Oak, owned by John and Carrie Cunningham.
Okay, will the Cunningham's come up? This bungalow shares many of the most common features of the style as it appears in Bartlett. North Oak Street is home, in fact, to a colony of bungalows, all constructed from the early 1900s to the late 1920s. This home has side dormers and an attached garage, which was added in 2008. Previous residents include Louise and Henry Holtz. Henry was a, in 1930, a golf course groundskeeper. It also includes somebody very famous in Bartlett village history, Orla Benson, and he, for many years, was Bartlett's Director of Public Works.
The second house, a Chicago bungalow, built in 1927, is owned by Charles M. DeVoe III and located at 111 North Tatki in the Crestview subdivision, Tatki.
It follows the basic bungalow pattern of one-and-a-half-story form, with dormers opening from the hipped roof to expand the upstairs living space. It is constructed of fireproof brick with a porch protected against the winter. In 1926, the village board approved Moreau's Crestview subdivision, which encompassed the area north of North Avenue from Eastern to Hale and ending at Morse. The Depression ended the Bartlett building boom of the 1920s, of which this was a part. The original owner of this house is said to have worked for the railroad.
The third house is a Tudor revival, built around 1947 at 215 Hickory Avenue, owned by Todd and Annette Olson.
Tudor houses are designed to evoke a sense of solid respectability and traditional values, combining materials and design cues, emulating the English country homes. Its high-pitched roofline, solid brick construction with stone accents, exposed half-timbering wood elements, arched entryways, and massive chimneys are hallmarks of this style. This was the home of Lester Bull, a member of the volunteer fire department who was known to host gatherings of neighbors and fellow firefighters in the two-car garage that had and still has a fireplace. Lester was the son of William Billy Bull, Bartlett's longtime volunteer fire department chief, and the owner of, not here anymore, but was at the time, the famous Bull's grocery and butcher shop.
The fourth house is a California bungalow, built around 1928 at 126 North Berto, and owned by John and Ivana Peterson.
This compact bungalow has an airy, open front porch, more typical of California than of the Midwest. The home is of framed construction and has replaceable siding, which retains the narrow lap appearance of the original clapboards. It was also in the Crestview subdivision and owned by the Claire Murphy family. Claire is listed in the 1930 census as a bookkeeper in a bank. Only five of the 52 homes built here were occupied by owners. Many were rental units, going for $25 per month.
The fifth house is a bungalow cottage, built in 1929 at 125 North Berto, owned by Garrett Schrader.
It's a variation of the bungalow with only one story and without dormers. It's of framed construction with a low-pitched front gabled roof. The enclosed front porch does not extend over the entire front, but adds a second gable, with both gables parallel to the street. It was part of the once Crestview subdivision, one of a It was part of the once Crestview subdivision, one of a number of working-class homes built from 1928 to 1929. The Depression stalled construction for developer Frank Moreau. Many lots remain vacant until the next building boom in Bartlett, which did not come until the 1950s.
And finally, let me introduce Clay Tickness, who will be accepting for his father Bill Tickness, their family home located at 207 Eastern, built in 1952.
This minimal, traditional style was derived from the popular Tudor style, but simplified, retaining the front gable and with a steep-pitched lower roof. After Bill, his wife Charlie, and their boys moved here in 1958, they were very active in the Bartlett community. Bill served as a volunteer fireman, a village trustee, village president, and Hanover Township supervisor. He was also co-chair of the Bartlett Centennial Commission and facilitated the Bartlett Hills Golf Course.
We have one more home to mention here tonight. This is a previous winner of a plaque, a class D, although it's a little bit difficult. However, we have a unique thing happen, and this home was entered and recognized by the National Archery Magazine. We have a copy over here, so we're now on that, all over the country. This is a winner of a Periodical Award. We've got a copy over here with the Ashram.
That's great.
Now we can work to dig a little bit. This is the copy of the article. That's 217 North Oak.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Pleiss, and excellent presentation, and we look forward to your selections for next year.
I just want to say, we placked Anarino's house in 2012. That's why they didn't get a plaque tonight, they've already had a plaque. But we feel very encouraged by the fact that a national architectural magazine would say, "Good job, Bartlett Historical Society."
The next item, under my lengthy President's Report, is a proclamation, the National Safe Whereas recreational boating is a fun and enjoyable, and the U.S. Coast Guard has resources to accommodate the wide variety of pleasure boating demands, and whereas waterways can become crowded at times and become a place of chaos and confusion, while being a marvelous source of recreation, boating to the unprepared can be a risky sport, not knowing or obeying the navigation rules or the nautical rules of the road, drinking alcohol or taking drugs while operating a boat, or choosing not to wear your life jacket when doing so, is clearly not the smart thing to do. They are all examples of human error or a lack of proper judgment. And whereas one particular behavior that can reduce the number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year by approximately 80% is wearing, the wearing of a life jacket. It is a simple task that has the potential to reduce terrible loss in lives, and whereas the knowledge and skills are important to reducing human error and improving judgment. If people are aware of the risk, they are likely to take the precautionary measures to protect themselves and their friends and family. And whereas, on average, 700 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, approximately 70% of these are fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas, the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas, today's life jackets are more comfortable, more attractive, and more wearable than styles of years past and deserve a fresh look by today's boating public. Therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, President of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and Kane Counties of Illinois, do hereby support the goals of the North American Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May 17th through the 23rd, 2014, as National Safe Boating Week and start the year-round effort to promote safe boating. One is Arts in Bartlett Class D liquor license request. Arts in Bartlett has submitted an application for a Class D liquor license for their fine art fair event on June 28th and 29th, 2014, at Bartlett Park. The Class D liquor license allows for retail sale of alcohol for the special event. Certificate of Insurance has been reviewed and approved. The application certificate of insurance is attached for your review, for my review. So, Class D needs an approval. I'll entertain a motion, or I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Shipman, seconded by trustee Cammer. Trustee Martin and trustee Cammer.
Mayor, I think you want to call the roll.
How much do I owe you?
Lunch.
Oh, that's right. Please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
And President Wallace?
Yes. That motion carries. Arts in Bartlett's liquor license is approved. Second item on the President's Report is the liquor license renewal for the standing liquor license. They are for O'Hare Vance Enterprises, Inc., doing business as the O'Hare Pub and Restaurant, and for J.C. Mexican Restaurant Incorporated. If there are no objections, I intend to renew the liquor license for those following businesses. Moving right along, the next item on the agenda is under Questions and Answers. Are there any questions the board has at this time? Hearing none, we will move on to the Town Hall portion of the meeting. This is a portion of the meeting that we, if anybody has any things to address the board, we ask that you please step up to the podium. Please list your, please state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, thank you for seeing us. My name is Samantha Parkhurst. I live on 569 Ivory Lane. We've lived here for 11 years, and my concern and question for the board is to consider revisiting the train horns. I have called a couple of years ago, and in that area, it seems that's just about the only area in town that does not have a quiet zone. Looking around, you see no train horn signs downtown, along the whole track line, even by Naperville Road, and our houses over there, we're on the very far end, we're on Ivory, and we're within a stone's throw from those tracks. And with the abundance of trains that have come, and the ones that are future to come, which is Amtrak, and then the Joliet Line that's supposed to come through, I am asking the board to please consider our request to make this a quiet zone. There's a lot of things that I think that can happen to make it even better, because from what I understand, there's supposed to be maybe a train station put there in the future with Amtrak coming through, and if that happens, can we consider making it quiet now? And then this will help with the aesthetics of it, because it's a rundown-looking area back there, and there's a couple businesses are, we chose to live here. We knew coming in, when you come in, you look around, there's trains, there's tracks, but it has multiplied. There's like 84 to 86 trains a day that come through, and some of the demeanor of some of the train conductors can be a little aggravating at 2:00 in the morning when you're trying to sleep, and, you know, all of us have talked about them, we're like, you know, he blares that thing sometimes 2:00 in the morning, and I know it's a quiet zone, or quiet between 2:00 and 4:00, and then Metro starts around again at 4:00 in the morning. So, we understand that there's going to be noise from the trains, but if you multiply 86 trains times four blasts every time one goes through, that's 320 train horns we're listening to. I understand, I spoke to Scott Spurkey, I don't know if he's still here, yes, thank you. I spoke to him, and he said that it was something that, okay, well, maybe we'll talk about it, but it is a long time, and it costs lots of money. From my understanding, in the beginning of, well, I don't know when, I spoke to somebody else, I think by the name of Steve, a couple of years ago, he told me that there is infrastructure underneath. There has already been put some work underneath, underground, to work on this in the future. Well, it's the future now, and you've got two big subdivisions that live there, and, okay, so if the work is underground already, why can't we build up and use the work that's there already, and make it a quiet zone? Put the gates up, put the lights up, you know, fix the tracks, make it aesthetically nicer to be driving through. And as far as a safety concern, you know, I look at downtown, there's buses, school buses, there's lots of foot traffic between all the businesses. Our area over here, it's just a little, you know, traffic that comes through, not nearly as much as downtown sees. So, from a standpoint of us being where we live, yes, we chose to live there, but it's not fair, because it is so noisy over there, and then the rest of Bartlett is a quiet zone. So, I'm asking the board to please reconsider this. I have a neighbor here who also would like to speak, and she's got some information from, you know, the federal grants that are available from the Federal Railroad Association. I just, I know that we've raised taxes to purchase Villa Olivia and to reconstruct the pool. So, can we maybe consider, I don't mean to make people mad at me, but would we consider any type of maybe taking some taxes, and if we tweak it $10, $20, whatever, but whatever it'll take to help raise more money to help make our end a quiet zone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Nicole Kuda. I live at 574 Ivory Lane. I'm Sam's neighbor, and of course, I did a little bit of research. I do not all, I do not know all of your, you know, breakdowns of costs and considerations that you've done. I have read your minutes of your meetings. I don't believe that all of the considerations have been thought of. I think that other analysis could be considered, maybe looking at, has anyone looked at the Federal Railway Administration? There are grants that they allow. There is a rail line relocation improvement capital grant program. They will, and we are absolutely considered for that, if you read all of the information on it. Even if we move, ask the businesses to move the driveways, I read the minutes on the last meeting, that doesn't solve the problem of the horns evidently that have to be run the entire time the train has to run through. So, you know, the four-quad gate solution that you came up with, the Metro line said, "Well, we don't have any information on it." Well, they do have one area that has a four-quad gate. How long has it been there? Do the local police in that town have any information? Did anyone call the local police in that town? Were there any incidents? How long has it been there? If Metro doesn't have any information, does the local police to that town have any information? Did anyone call there? Can we not be the second test location? This is a side road on Spalding by two businesses, really not in the middle of subdivision, at the end of two. That should be considered. We also, we also really should consider the reconstruction of the crossing of the road. I know it's at an angle. I do not know the cost of reconstructing a road, but looking at the road, when you, if you reconstruct it to be straight, what would the cost be? Is it really that, over a million dollars? And why would Grant or CN, when you have not gone back to them, says it's going to cost more than a million dollars that you're offering, why would, would they not solve the problem for us completely? That's my question. I think we should ask those questions, find out the answers, and come back with actual complete answers. And I don't think that sound barriers are the final answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Does staff have any comments regarding this situation? I know we've spoken about this before.
Yeah, this is an ongoing issue. We spent, and we'd be happy to spend more time reviewing it, we spent two years with CN and going through the details of our ability to put in a quiet zone at that area, and we were not successful. I appreciate the comments that you have raised relative to grants, and we certainly will go back and pursue those, but we have timeframes on the money from CN, and we have looked at the place that we thought it might be most effective to spend it. As you know, the board authorized a study of that area, and that's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, I know that we are studying the area.
If I could make one comment, it should be Canadian National. From my perspective, I feel that it's more of a Metro issue than Canadian National. And I called up to Manitoba, Canada, I think is where they are based, and the lady told me she should see the map, and she said, "What street are you talking?" And I said, "I agree, it's Spalding there," and she said, "I can see exactly," and she says, "Ours is labeled, so they can see what track line is there." And when I was telling her what I was looking for, she said, "No, that's, that's a different entity, that's Metro." And I called downtown to Metro and talked to somebody there, and so we have to start with an education process, so that's why we're here today, to ask if Metro, it's those 84 Metro trains that come through, or however many, it multiples on Metro, it's not Canadian National, that we're asking for from quiet zones, it's Metro.
Throughout the analysis of the quiet zone, we met with representatives from the HRA, who oversee the whole quiet zone project, and Metro representatives, they've been very helpful in helping us determine some costs there. And Metro actually puts in the constant warning signal, which is what you were referring to. They do that when they were upgrading modular crossings. So now it's standard for Metro to put in that constant warning signal, which is one of the I C C, one of their requirements for a quiet zone, and that's what the state was referring to.
Thank you, Paula. When we do anticipate the end of this study, when do we anticipate any results back from this study?
They are doing sound testing Wednesday and Thursday, and we should have a report from the sound folks in the next two weeks.
So it'll probably be first agenda in June, maybe?
Yeah, we'll need to take a look at it, but certainly it will be back, and we'll let you know when.
Is this 24-hour monitoring? Because it's not daytime, it's dinnertime, you know, it echoes in the houses. We can't sit down in our backyard and have a conversation with anybody on the phone or with our neighbors. We have to wait till the noise stops happening. So we would like to know that they're doing a 24-hour survey, to make sure they're getting appropriate data, and, you know, definitely like to talk more about this if we can come back.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Burseff. I live at 880 Kingsteth Lane in Bartlett. Sorry for my shaking, I have a medical condition. I've noticed on the website for Bartlett, under the mission statement, and also on the key strategy plan, that you guys have environmental-friendly alternatives. And I have one that I want to use, and I have been forbidden to use. I have weeds throughout my yard, coming from Bartlett Beaver Pond. I can't use pesticides because of my condition, and I would like to hire goats to come and eat the weeds in my yard. They would not live in my yard, they would just be there to eat the weeds. When goats eat the weeds, they dissipate the weeds completely, and the weeds cannot make seeds from it. When you cut it with a lawnmower, the weeds multiply more. As you know, pesticides aren't real great, and I can't be around pesticides or herbicides. And we know we've been using those for 45 years, and I don't think any of you are free yards of weeds. So I'm just looking, you guys on your website, as a mission statement, have environmental-friendly alternatives, and this is a method that's being used throughout the United States to rid neighborhoods of weeds. My second issue that I'd like to bring up, so I'd like you to consider that, because I would rather do that than to have pesticides and herbicides in my yard. The second issue I have is you guys have this wonderful article about building permits. I hired a business here in town, Future Windows, to put siding, roof, and gutters on my, on my house. They did not pass inspection. I paid over $25,000. I called the business, trying to use the business here in town, because I'm... here in town, because I'm supportive of Bartlett businesses. I was told that I could go to A G L L, and I've repeatedly stopped in and have called the building department to see what can be done about it. Nobody's ever gotten back to me, it's never been fixed, and it makes me wonder why I would ever use a business in Bartlett ever again. Nobody wants to take the job on because of not passing inspection. So my two issues, so I'd like to use environmental-friendly goats, and I think that something, if you're going to issue building permits, and just to let you know, Future Windows told me that I didn't need a permit. I said, I don't do any work without following the rules of Bartlett. The permit was added to my bill after I signed the bill. So he wanted to do the work without a building permit. I now understand why, but at the same time, if you get a building permit from Bartlett here, you get no backing from that either for the citizens. And all I want is my siding to be fixed. Thank you.
Cheryl, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
One, one, this was done some time ago, wasn't it?
Yes.
How many years?
Well, he took, just to let you know, to put the siding up on my house, took over six months to put the siding up, from the time he took it down to the time he finished it. And I've repeatedly tried to go other routes to get this taken care of, between calling him and the Better Business Bureau, and I, I've tried to get other businesses to come in just to fix it. Nobody wants to take on the job, because they said, several people said it was put up wrong in the first place, and basically all of it would have to be torn down and re-put up again.
But what year was it done?
I think it was, by the time he finished, it was 2010.
Okay.
And I've been trying to get this resolved since then.
Wow. Have you called the window manufacturer?
Well, it's not a manufacturer issue, the contractors that have come out said it was the way that it was installed.
But if they know that somebody's installing incorrectly, they may have some reason.
I've tried calling them also. You know, they said that it's the contractor's issue.
Thank you, Ms. Bressup, by the building department. Take a look at it.
And I would also like to, you know, if we're going to say we're environmental-friendly on our website, and in your strategy plan for 2011, 2012, and your mission statement to be environmental-friendly alternatives, I think we need to be looking at it. There's way too many pesticides and herbicides being used. They go leach into the water system and backing up to Beaver Pond, that's where it leaches into that was eventually goes into the Fox River. So I think you should look at, they would not be living at my house, they would be coming to do their job and go home.
They pick them up in the evening?
Yeah, so they're not even there during the, you know, they'd just be there, do their job, and be done with it. So they would not be living there. But I think we should be looking into environmental-friendly ways to solve a lot of pesticide, herbicides. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ron Callahan. I live in Charter Oaks subdivision. I've been in Bartlett 20 years. Charter Oaks is in DuPage County, so I'm here to talk taxes. And I, I looked at a lot of different taxes of you folks here, and I know we're all in the same boat. It got my attention because my taxes are up to over $1,000 a month for a $330,000 assessed home. And so I started digging, like, why is this, why is this? And we got that letter from Mike Munson, the assessor, and he was pretty succinct. Well, there, there's two reasons. Taxing bodies keep raising your taxes, and the second reason is there's this allocation scheme, and I like to focus on the allocation scheme. I, I've made a number of calls to try to understand this allocation scheme. It's very difficult, apparently, to understand. I'm wondering if the town has anybody looking into this. It, it, I guess it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. They say, well, the assessments in Kane and Cook, they've gone down more than they've gone down in Bartlett. You know, just my intuition would say, you know, it was a bad crisis we went through. Didn't it all go down kind of uniformly? Apparently not. And apparently, the assessments in Bartlett must be, or in DuPage must be quite a bit higher, because in my case, and I know your case, Mayor, and Ms. Aaron's, your taxes are up 18% in the last two years. And a lot of it must be to this allocation scheme. And I'm wondering, you know, like I said, I've made a lot of calls. Is the, is the village looking into this? I think, you know, it, I used to think it's a long-term issue of taxes driving people out of the village, but if they go up 18% every two years, it's not going to be a long-term issue for the health of this village. Is somebody looking into this?
Yeah. Pretty in-depth look into it. We've contacted the Department of Revenue. They are actually concerned that there could have been somewhat of a miscalculation, so that's one thing. I doubt that. And I agree with you 100%. It's a very complicated methodology that they use to shift burdens around. And it's by Illinois statute, so our job is to make sure, and my job is going to be to go down there personally and make sure that there was not a mistake made on the burden shift to DuPage County. Bartlett isn't alone here. I talked to the other mayors of towns that share borders with Cook and DuPage, somewhat in Hanover Park, and Kane and DuPage in St. Charles. So there are, there are a lot of things taking place right now from a village standpoint, and I've asked the staff to set up meetings with all of the legislatures that we can get in touch with, and with the actual Department of Revenue Director. So we'll be meeting with him. And just explain our disappointment.
If you could just kind of, like, keep people informed through the news or whatever. You know, I try to think, what can I do? When I vote, you know, you try to vote, guys, that you think will keep taxes in line.
Yeah.
And in this case, like you said, it got my attention. So I started calling all over the place, and you get different answers from whomever you talk to.
It's very disappointing for us, because we worked really hard as a board to lower our burden from the villages.
Yeah, and I've noticed that, reading the thing. You guys seem like you're paying attention.
That was not an easy decision by the board, and now you get whacked from the side with this additional shift in burden with some of the taxing bodies increasing their levies. So you had that combination of things that caused that increase. But we will keep it posted as far as the information that we find out.
Great. Yeah, the more scary thing to me is, as I called around, I talked to everybody from Jim Olberweis, I tried to talk to representative, I got to Jim, I actually talked to him, he didn't know anything about it. You know, I talked to the assessor's assistant, he explained a lot of stuff to me, and I called the state and everything, but you kind of get different answers from different people. And a lot of it is, well, we did our part, and we threw it over the fence to somebody else, and, gosh, we were as surprised as anybody. You know, it's all, you know, it'd be nice if somebody was kind of trying to coordinate it, sort of figure it out and explain. And if there's something that we can do to help, I'm surprised there's not more of me here.
Well, yeah, we've, we've had plenty of emails, and
Okay.
I've got them all flagged to make sure that when we do get some concrete answers, that we'll follow back up with the, and let you know what we found out. Thank you, Mr.
Callahan. Yeah, thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we'll move along. The next item on our agenda is the Standing Committee reports, first of which is the Planning and Zoning Committee chaired by Trustee Cameron.
Thank you, President Wallace. There are two items this evening under the Planning and Zoning Committee, the first of which is a side yard variation at 987 West Sterns Road. The petitioner, Michael Moore, is requesting a two-and-a-half-foot variation from the 15-foot required side yard to bring the existing house into conformance with the zoning ordinance in order to build a 22-foot by 31-foot second-story addition on the eastern half of the house. The addition will not encroach any closer to the east property line than the existing house. A public hearing was held on the variation addition on May 1, and the Zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval. This matter was before the committee at the whole on May 6, and was sent on to the, on to the village board for a final vote. I therefore move to approve ordinance 2014-39, an ordinance granting a side yard variation for 987 West Sterns Road as presented.
Second. It's moved by Trustee Cameron, seconded by Trustee Martin. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item under Planning and Zoning Committee is the petition of the Bartlett Park District for a variation to allow a message center sign greater than 20 square feet at Villa Olivia. The Park District is proposing to remove the existing billboard sign along Lake Street and replace it with a new 14-foot tall pole sign, 43 foot, 43 square feet in an area, which will include a 30-square-foot changeable electronic message center. A public hearing on the variation petition was held on May 1, and the Zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval. This item was before the committee at the whole on May 6, and was sent on to the village board for a final vote. I therefore move to approve ordinance 2014-40, an ordinance granting a variation to allow a message center sign to exceed 20 square feet for Villa Olivia as presented.
Second. It's moved by Trustee Cameron, seconded by Trustee Shipman. Is there any discussion?
Is Ms. Fletcher still here?
She is, sitting in the back.
Frida, what do you need such a huge banner for?
So I didn't forget.
I'm going to make sure I've got my stopwatch to make sure that thing isn't changing more than every 30 seconds.
I, I just wanted to say, thank you, thank you, thank you. The old sign, it, it's awful. And the new sign is, is very aesthetically pleasing. I think the Park District, knowing some of your commissioners, it probably took you two or three meetings to decide on the sign. But, very nice, very nice job.
You know, there's, there are some of those signs, like the Popeye's sign on 59 and North Avenue, that are brighter than the sun when they, when you go by them. This won't be one of those signs, right?
You are absolutely right.
Okay.
Now, is this within the regulations of the new sign code that we had?
Yes, it is. If you, in the minutes I spoke to that issue.
Yeah.
So we will change the new ordinance, the proposed, will, this will meet it.
So if the Park District would have held their horses a little bit, they wouldn't have had to have this variance.
It's, right. But they wanted to get this sign up, and so we
Gombrontron.
More points.
Good.
Always welcome.
We've got a great golf course you can come by.
Yeah.
Use if you'd like some.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries. And always a pleasure to have you here, Ms. Fletcher.
And that would be all we have tonight.
All right. Next item on the agenda is our Building Committee Chairman Martin.
I have no report this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Martin. Next item is Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item is License and Ordinance Committee Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing else other than what was on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Next item on the agenda is under Police and Health Committee Chairman Shipman.
All of the items other than E1 were covered under consent agenda, and E1 we did at the top of the order, so.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Shipman. And finally, under Public Works Committee Chairman Aaron's.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our one agenda item is the tree removal contract extension bid waiver. We've been dealing with Trees R Us to help us with our tree problem, and they would like to offer us the same price next year as we have this year. And that was, when we approved the original contract, that was a real good price. So we'd like to waive the bid process and extend this agreement through 2015. So at this time, I would move to approve resolution 14-41, a resolution waiving bids for tree removal services and extending the contract with Trees R Us through 2015.
Second. It's moved by Trustee Aaron, and seconded by Trustee Martin. Is there any discussion?
Yes. The question I had, if I can remember it now, geez. Well, oh, we talked earlier in one of the meetings a month or two ago, about opening up the, the tree removal company's prices to the general public. And we said we, Paul at the time said he'd talk to the tree removal company and find out if they were open to that idea. And I don't know if that was ever done or not.
Well, Paul's not here, so we, no.
And so what we would ask them to do is to extend those prices to residents who wanted to buy those trees for their private property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I don't know if that was done or not.
Yeah, for the existing company that we hire, which, I forget the name.
We.
Or us. Trees R Us, then, we would, I'm just asking, would they ask if they would accept this price by the individuals that have trees on their property that want to take it down as well at this, at this price?
I spoke to Paul about that, and the issue was raised with them, but it's a different contract between the owner and the contractor, different insurance issues. The price for tree removal on private property depends where it's located in connection with the house. As opposed to the parkway, there's nothing around it, so they can lock in those prices. But there are a lot of factors in a yard, like how far you have to haul it, where they could not lock into that price. And they, they will negotiate, you know, with homeowners, and if they're on a given street, they'll likely give them a deal, but they didn't, couldn't be tied into this particular contract.
Well, I'm not saying that we should tie it into it, I'm just asking, would it be amenable to?
They're amenable to a separate deal, but it wouldn't be that same price because of those varying factors. If it's an easy removal, I'm sure they would do it for that price, but they, there's just too many factors relative. But they, they did express that they would be amenable to that.
All right. Well, that's what I was curious about.
That's a good question. Is there any other questions?
I would just point out that actually, the contractor reduced its unit price fee in this proposal over the bid prices that we had last year. So it's actually a slight reduction depending on the size of the tree.
All right. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Just for the record, that was ordinance 214-42. Trustee Aaron's?
What?
Oh, yeah.
42.
I'm sorry. Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oh, that
Do it first.
Do it.
Thank you, Chairman Aaron's. Next item on the agenda is under New Business. Is there any new business at this point for the good of the order?
Well, you know, I, when I was reading the report of our Economic Development Coordinator, no, is that right, Tony? And his interview with Laurel from the flower shop, and she was talking about the online sales, et cetera. And I was just wondering if there was any weight we could put to that, to, you know, that's for the retailers that compete, that, I mean, the brick and mortar retailers that compete with all the online retailers. That's a hard road to hoe. And is there anything, like a proclamation or, or something that, that we can do to send on to, say, the state that might add some weight to that issue? And we may even want to do this in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce or whatever.
Yeah.
It is, it's an issue.
Yeah. Yeah, when they're fighting against online
You know, they're paying for the brick and mortar, and, and the online folks come in. It's, you know, it's fair business practice.
Is that something we would want to request the Economic Development Commission look into?
Hey, that might be a good idea. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, we want to check into what tactics are available for village, for us to promote throughout the village, for our own retailers to enhance their sales over internet sales?
Mm-hmm. That's a good idea. We certainly will pass that along.
Good. Is there any other business?
I didn't have new business. I had just a quick comment, although everything was covered under consent agenda. I did notice that through diligent work by our, our police department, they saved just a notch under $5,700 in purchasing these vehicles. So congratulations to them. Every penny counts when we're trying to save up to finance a second canine unit. Is that correct?
And those cars
Make it for that.
The cars eat a lot more than the dog.
[laughing]
Good. Any questions and answers from the board?
Yes. Without giving anything away, how's things going over at Dominic's, the old Dominic's area?
You know, we have been spending some time with the property owner, and I think Jim can kind of update you on some can kind of update you on some of our progress in getting them to, they want to get Dominix out of theirs in terms of continuing to pay the rent, so they have some flexibility about bringing in some new people. And importantly, I think they're looking at dividing up the building, but Jim may have a more recent update.
Actually, what Valerie said is the direction that the ownership would like to go into. The hold is that Safeway, the parent company of Dominix, is actually being bought out by another company, and so they don't want to move on closing that lease until the new company takes over. But the ownership of the shopping center would like to do that, carve up the space, and then re-subdivide it. It's an expensive carve-up, depending on the size of it, but a demising wall for each unit is roughly about $1 million by the time you put the electricity and everything in there. So that's where they're at. Tony has been in constant contact with ownership of the shopping center, as well as the real estate investment trust that owns the shopping center and the broker, and they're kind of waiting for Safeway to be bought out so that they can negotiate with the new owner. So it's a complex problem, but that's the direction, as Valerie said, they would like to go into.
Okay. One other thing, on the train sound wall, we get that back with the $1 million, is there any, if we decide not to go with the sound wall, can we put that into a quiet zone, as long as the money is being used for that area? Or it has to be earmarked for some kind of soundproofing?
We tried to earmark it for a quiet zone.
But if that, if they say, "Well, it's only going to reduce the sound by 20%," we're like, "Okay, why, you know, can we..."
I think when this study comes back, you will have an opportunity to look at all your options out there and decide which is the best way to mitigate the impact of those trains.
What I guess what I'm asking is, if it comes back and we don't like it, is there a chance for us to say, "Well, can we put this towards a quiet zone in that area?", or it's not even allowed?
Well, I will tell you, I don't know if it's allowed. Between Metro and CN, they said no, and in large part, it was financial. I mean, I don't think we want to look at something that may cost many, many, many millions, knowing that we have $1 million to go with it. So we'll have to look at that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Jim, do we have any update on the few of the establishments that are kind of hanging in the loo out there as far as the Still and the Tap, and any timing on those places reopening?
I think on the Still, Brian, you saw the sign going up, and Brian's done some recent inspections there with the electrical inspection, maybe Brian can answer the Still question a little better.
Did you already try the barbecue, Brian?
I believe with the microphone.
The Still is about 99% ready to go, they have cleaning product in there, it looks like it's ready to open, I don't know, and every time my staff goes there to inquire, there's no one working. So, you know, we're there almost on a daily basis, kind of checking up, because we're kind of anxious for it to open as well, so... But it looks really nice, it's done from what we can see.
I'm also getting a few questions about the completion timeline for the Walgreens.
They're moving ahead rapidly. I would say that the Walgreens probably look at...
They were hoping the end of July, but I think it'll be more like the end of August.
August, yeah.
Okay.
And as the Tap, I've looked in the window of the Tap, it looks like they're done, but why they haven't moved towards opening it, they did renew their liquor license, I talked to the ownership, he got the liquor license renewal in there, and they want to reopen as the Tap, like they've talked to us. I don't know the timeframe.
They took away the back bar, did they?
Pardon?
They didn't take away the back bar, did they?
In the Tap?
Yes.
No, they redid the floor and put in drains and everything, but they didn't take it away.
It's from 1890, isn't it? I think it's from 1890.
Oh, no, the back bars from 1884.
We've got one other shameless plug.
I don't know how old it is, but it still looks the same inside.
Well, they filled the tap.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can try calling Gary, you know, and see.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
Is anything being done with Lucky Jacks that they followed through with?
Same story, ownership being Gary, I won't name names, but his new partner have gone through, when I talked to him about the liquor license renewal, which expired at the end of April, he told me that they went through the foreclosure, a closing after it went through foreclosure on Lucky Jacks. And he said that was going to occur early May. So they're going to buy, my last conversation is that they, it's probably to this date, they closed on that. And they would like to renovate it, that's what they indicated. They may be waiting for the TIF creation, they talked about that.
Very good, I'm looking forward to seeing everybody on Memorial Day.
I've got one more shameless plug, as a veteran, we have a 10 o'clock Saturday memorial at the statue, everyone's invited.
Okay, 10 o'clock Saturday at the memorial. Good, thanks, Gary. If there's nothing else, entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Ehrens, seconded by Trustee Martin. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ehrens?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.